Moving on, we get to items, Mr. Holford, landings law. What's this about? Let's play it to start that line, you know, turn the TV lights off. This cable's for jacket, the TV lights.
Got to get them to get you guys the fluorescent or LED lights. No heat.
All right, Mr. Holford, what's up?
Well, I think Bud made the recommendation that we look deeper into the zoning and have the discussion, if I'm called correctly, and start to work through some of the back and forth, some of the issues that we talked about, the urban, I don't know if you want to break it down.
Well, the last time we talked, Fred was here, and we kind of thought, you know, we have ground to cover and decisions to be made, and the suggestion was maybe we have a special meeting where we actually bring, discuss some items, bring them up for motion, discuss some items, and get a vote, just so we can move on to other items. And I've talked to Fred about that, and Fred feels like, you know, it's really not a huge hurry. We want to get this done this year, for sure. Not a tremendous hurry.
Yeah, I think it's fair. I think, you know, at this point...
A special meeting may not be required, but let's really put emphasis on it at our meetings.
We need to spend some time kind of discussing the open issues, the feedback we've gotten from the community, and the appropriate point, whatever that may be, to vote modifications that we'd like to make to the proposed zoning law, and then finally adopt the zoning ordinance. Now, actually, I thought you were going to talk about current issues in subdivision, annexation, and zoning workshop. What's that all about?
It's news to me, I don't know.
See, I'm the pamphlet you had the last meeting, that you thought was going to be a good idea for folks to tune in.
Yes.
Oh, that landings laws.
That's another one. I don't know how my name always gets attached with things that I'm unaware of.
There was something that I saw on my emails about, also came through, about alternate forms of revenue.
Yeah.
It's this Friday.
It's Friday, it's outside a call on this. But it seems like we're bouncing all over. Where do you want to go, Fred?
Well, let's talk about this first, I guess.
Yeah, let's deal with this. Is there anybody that's interested in attending the seminar?
Well, first, is this, after you've read this, does it, do you feel like it's something? You know, a lot of these seminars sound good, but you get there and by noon, you're ready to go home.
Well, I mean, we don't have any subdivision. I think we're deep in the zoning process, and I don't know if learning about it December's going to improve that or not. Annexation, you know, the state's made annexation really painful and expensive, and it's made it so that it's, there's not much of a financial benefit to an annexing community.
Well, I think we want to make a decision on this before December anyway. I mean, we want to be pretty much...
Yeah, as far as zoning thing, you know.
So, always forget that, and since it's different. The other seven, I really doesn't have anything to do with zoning. That is, that's a turning revenue.
I looked at that, and there's been some revenue generation ideas advanced, and they're all things that are really change a community. Think of Elmwood Place and what they've gone through recently, and those are the kind of severe kinds of revenue enhancement things, like putting... One suggestion that would come out of this would be put parking meters in the shopping center. You know, there's enough struggles there. Or red light cameras, that's another big revenue enhancer idea. The cameras that take, that are doing the speed things, you know. Honestly, if I'm going to church and I'm three miles over the speed limit, I don't want a speeding ticket. And I don't think most citizens do either.
What you mentioned today, the one in Elmwood.
Our trucks, we already got four tickets going down that street in Elmwood. It was a 25 mile limit, anything that's over eight miles an hour, you get a five dollar ticket.
And to me, and so... What was the income from that?
Oh, like 100 some thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, if it keeps on low like this, they'll do 20 million for the year.
To me, it generates revenue, but it creates, boy, I don't want to ever go through that town.
Oh.
Well, we've already got that reputation.
Oh, I already got a call from a client today who lives in Fairfield and works south of the village and comes through here, and he commented, he called me today and commented on the nice pavement, and he said, "Is this to make me go faster?" So I said, "I said, you know the speed limit, it's 35. Please obey our laws, we have children across the streets." But I, rather than attending, what I'd like to do is do some follow-up afterwards to see if there are any viable ideas that don't change who we are as a community.
Follow-up?
Follow-up with the group that's hosting it. The group that's hosting it, yeah.
Fair enough. On to the zoning code amendments. Well, you've got a specific list of things, some of the issues that, you know, obviously, one of the things that we're going to want to discuss and kind of nod around the table about, where are we with the zoning method?
Do you want me to start with these?
Yeah, sure.
These are items that I don't think we have discussed, but every time I go through here, I pick up some different things, and one of the things that I tried to focus on was this signage. Although I do have a couple of comments, so if you have it in front of you, you can turn to the pages, some related to signage. In section 2.0, the definitions, page 17, we do have a definition of a sign portable sandwich board, and the only suggestion I would recommend to that is that the very end of that definition, which currently says, "Signs to be displayed indoors or outdoors," change that. We really only care about what's outdoors, to be displayed outdoors only during the hours of operation to get away from having these boys sitting out all hours of day and night. They should be taken in and out.
I agree.
That's one suggestion that I have. On page 18, the definition of small farm animal. Not talking about the animals at all here, but at the very end of that description, it says, "For purposes of this resolution," that needs to say, "for purposes of this code." So, yes, they're minor, but just a little bit of language. Page 60. Looking through the place now, huh? And we are in the, it's 9.11D. That references sight distant requirements for where in fences, hedges, walls will retain walls. And under D, it says, "No fence wall or hedge shall violate the sight distance requirement found in section 911 of this code." That is section 911. The proper one... Yeah, proper one was section 4.1. That needs to say section 4.1 there. Page, also on page 60, under retaining walls. And the only thing that made me take a look at this is we just had a recent instance with this. Currently, it says, "Retaining walls where the face of the wall is adjacent to adjoining residence district shall be set back from the residential property line a minimum of two feet for every foot of height." You know, in our recent case that we were looking at, that literally, when you looked at the issue of the water, of the mud that was rushing onto somebody's sidewalk, you would put it two feet back. It would've been in their bushes and not even hit, hit the dart that was, they're trying to hold back. So, I'm going to suggest that we have this section say, "Retaining walls shall be set back from the residential property line a minimum of one foot." That way, it keeps it back, I think, from people hitting or tripping on it.
Right.
So, it's not right up against the sidewalk?
Right. Going from one foot or two feet, it's way too far away from it.
From the property line?
From the right of way, yeah.
From their property line, yeah. With the right of way property line, wherever their property line is, if they're going to put a wall, it would have to be one foot.
So, this is side, side and rear yards, you're talking?
Now, also front.
It could be up front as well, running on like the sidewalk.
Well, it doesn't say sidewalk, it says property line.
So, it's setback.
Yeah. Right, but the sidewalk is part of your right of way, your right of way usually is 40 foot.
Yeah, property line doesn't actually start until, if you're standing in the street, past the sidewalk. If you're walking towards it.
One foot past sidewalks where your property line usually starts.
Really?
Yeah, okay, let me think how we can define that better.
Yeah, I think let's, let's get that straight, because, you know, if my property line starts inside the sidewalk, I don't expect the village to make any repairs necessary to that sidewalk. I mean, the property line basically starts at the curb, there's an easement.
No.
Your property line starts.
Your property line actually starts at the right of way.
Well, then...
Which would be your inside of your...
We need to find it there.
Yeah, we need to, we...
I think it's defined, right. I mean, it's from the residential property line, because again, your property line is not, it's not a curb.
If you ever got your plot plan, you just block your house, it'll actually show it that way. Your property line starts from the right of way.
So, if I'm mowing the grass in the planting strip?
That's not your, that's not, but you're responsible for it.
Well, talk about retaining walls here.
Right, over on Bockman, I used to live there, I put a retaining wall up, and I actually put it up to the sidewalk. And Dave came over, at that time, back in 1982, and he says, "Hey, you're supposed to put that back a foot away from the drive, because that's where your property line is at, so move it back."
And even if you read your property description on the auditor's page, and it says your property's 150 feet deep, it starts from that right of way.
Yeah, exactly.
150 feet, not 150 feet from the curb.
Right.
On the curb, you would add 101.
So, that's why some of them are curved up, because the further they get from the property line...
It needs to be, it needs to be obvious to everyone.
It's got to be back a foot for every two feet of height there, to make it that backwards. Two feet for every foot of height. So, I guess that's why a lot of those, those driveways would kind of go like this. Because they can't go like this, because...
Exactly.
They have to be set back.
Yeah, if you're cutting it to the ground itself, yeah.
Back in the house.
Yeah. Yours is okay. All right.
Okay, all right, now moving to signs, page 142. Temporary signs, I would suggest, it currently says, "Signs, pennants, banners, flags, streamers, or other displaying devices," and in my mind, I was thinking of those balloon things and shake all over.
Alien balloons.
Yeah, things that...
Those big...
Monster ones.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
I would suggest that we change this to say, "Signs, signs and banners, which are of a temporary nature." Because if you look back at our definitions, we have many, many different definitions of signs. Signs of a temporary nature, which advertise, all stays the same. Advertise or call attention to grand opening, special sales, or other temporary business promotions may be erected or installed upon our approval of the building's unofficial, and add in there. And in accordance with section 21.2D, which is, actually, tells you how big it can be, how many days it can be there. There was no reference to that, so if you took a first glance at your zoning code, and you're going to see that, and you think, oh, wow, this is telling me that, but it's not really telling me any of my regulations, so I probably got to reference 21D.
I agree.
Page 143, under... Oh, no, 143G, other prohibited signs, currently we prohibit pole signs, formal signs, knife signs, which are signs attached to public utility poles, vehicular signs, and I would like to add aerial signs.
There's an aerial sign for those that are...
Well, those are the big balloons that would, you know, like big blue gorilla or something on top of a building.
Oh, there's temporary inflated signs.
Yeah, okay, all right, we do have a definition of it. Aerial sign is any balloon or other airborne flotation device which is tethered to the ground or to a building or to a structure designed to attract attention.
Well, that's not a gorilla, that's something that goes in the air.
Right.
Yeah, but a gorilla...
A gorilla will just sit.
Blow up cars and blow up whatever. Well, it's the same thing about this.
Well, they, wouldn't that be a flotation device? It's tethered to a building.
A flotation.
If you cut it loose and it flies, I don't know. I don't know.
Okay.
That one's on you to figure out, to figure that out. And, you know, does everybody understand the, her point, or at least her request, is that like the giant inflatable gorilla that'll sit down on the car? Or the thing?
Well, I thought you were talking about the signs that they're tethered, they have a line going up, and it's floating up in the air.
Yeah, well, that's what aerial signs means. I think one of, one of the things...
Sorry, which gorilla signs?
Is the, you know, those 10-foot inflatable gorillas that look like...
They're tethered to the ground.
Yeah, 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 I mean, they'll put them on top of the, that oil change place down Wentworth sometimes.
Yeah.
Well, maybe if, if nothing on rooftops or a certain size, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I...
How do you come to some...
I don't know, and I, you know, is it a, is it a big deal?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of these things, are we ever going to run into it? And if we do, the zoning commission will make a decision on that at that time.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, it's, maybe we don't like them much, but if there's, we have a big giant. That's the fall, and we want to really get some attention, I don't know.
We'll get various.
Well, wouldn't that, wouldn't that fall under, it would fall under temporary signs, wouldn't it?
It could.
It would be a temporary sign of some sort.
And it says it has to be approved.
I think that needs a little more work.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that type of sign should be included in the temporary sign category, yeah.
Okay. Also, on page 143, the one thing that I found really missing from our sign section was any definition of what the sign should be made of.
Yeah, I agree with this.
Yeah, so I took a look at a couple of different codes, and I think we can, pretty simple, right now, I'm suggesting to add, right at the beginning of there, "Permanent signs shall be of a style, material, and design compatible with the associated building."
Yes.
So, it gives you a lot of...
Is that...
It needs to be creative, but it would, you know, fit with the building, so...
Is that too broad to be able to enforce?
No.
It is, it's close enough that it can actually be compatible with the building.
Yeah, because we also...
Show us the color and...
Well, what would be...
And we also, we have sign, we have size guidelines, you know, projection guidelines, that, you know, this isn't like the only guideline, but...
You got heights too, right?
Right. We have all those guidelines, this would just be, what could you make it out of? Even in our current code, we don't have any regulations on what signs could be made out of.
It's like a sheet of... But now, you know, okay, who is the arbiter?
What are...
And what, and what do you, do you arbitrate by? It, that's, it seems kind of nebulous to me.
Why is that? Because it's going by what the material is for the building itself.
Yeah, like if they're going to put something on a building that has wood trim, then your sign probably needs to have some wood and similar color schemes, and, you know, to fit with the building, that kind of thing.
Well, I think on that one, we may be better off not being too specific. And leave it to the building official.
Why don't we put, as, must be approved?
I think we need to have some of that thing.
Yeah, I think so too.
Well, let me pull some more examples.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, let's find something. I mean, if I was called upon to adjudicate this, you know, I say, we're sitting here making rules, and if you're called upon to apply the rules, how would you apply them? And that seems, that would be difficult to apply in an impartial fashion. You wouldn't want to necessarily have to have a designer, for example. Well, I mean, somebody, Jeff's sensibility, somebody with my sensibility may come with two completely different conclusions, reading the same piece of code. That shouldn't be the case. It should be reasonably measurable and cut to dry.
Who is the building's zone official that we refer to in here?
Connie, Westendorf does most of our zoning right now, but we can use our building official.
So, a lot of these things are...
A lot of experience with that.
Be your joint decision, yours and Connie's.
Great.
Yeah, Connie did a lot of zoning up in Springfield Township for years. She's really a miracle, that's a...
All right.
But I can pull more examples.
I think that'd be worthwhile, I'm saying.
I've got a zoning code that's, I think, pretty strong from a signage point of view, and one of the things they mentioned is the number of signs a business can have.
We have that one.
Okay, and where's that section?
Did you include your last item, or is that what you're talking about?
There's...
I can give one more.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, all right, yeah, real quick, on page 144. Ground, these are ground signs, and this, the height requirement on this is 15 feet. That's rather large for ground mounted, you should usually see them, you know, the real tough ones are...
Four, five foot.
You know, real tough ones are like six.
Yeah.
And then, you know, many are eight to 10, I would suggest eight. 15 is way too high for ground mounted.
It's a billboard.
Way big, way big.
Sounds good.
Okay, your question was on...
The number.
Interesting.
Yes, we have, you have to do probably a number of computations, total wall size, space... Should I answer your angle?
Maybe if it's components put together to answer that question, I really like theirs. It's just simply a bullet point of number of signs, and then it goes and break down of what that, what that entails. I'd like to call it out, because as you know, there are some businesses that think that, you know, 27 signs for them, and I guess it depends on how we define a sign.
Right, and we're probably, I hear what you're saying, and we do have limitations on, you know, you can have one on a facade, you know, if you're on a corner, you can have one on each street fronting facade. Combined, they can only equal, it's a certain formula based on your, the length, your actual frontage that you have, that would, yeah, you can't have like unlimited number of signs, okay.
All right. Certain square footage of sign based upon footage of that.
Right.
Maybe it's a title thing, I just want to call it out as limited number.
Yeah, if you have suggested one, take a look at that.
Too bad. All right. Jeff, are you next, or you want me to go?
No, I was...
Let's go left or right, start, what do you got?
Well, I just don't understand this, on page 58, you got used to hearing that from me, I don't understand. G, last thing. "Recreational vehicle should be located no closer than a minimum distance of three feet from the side and rear yard when parked or stored in the rear yard of residents."
What number is that?
It's the last one on the page, 58G. I just don't understand what that says. Where do I, if I had, if I were having an RV and I want to park it in my backyard, where do I put it?
Well, it's got to be three feet off the property line.
Yeah, side or back.
And three feet from the side yard.
Doesn't say anything about the property.
I know, it, it doesn't.
It says, "Minimum distance of three feet from the side and rear yard," while it's in the rear yard.
Well, I think, I think the intent there is three feet back from the side yard. Side yard is that piece of the yard which goes from the front of the house to the back of the house.
Starts the back corner, yeah.
Starts the back corner, so three feet back from that. But, you know, how could it be three feet from the rear yard if it's in the rear yard?
Exactly.
I believe the intent of that was three feet...
Rear yard line.
Three feet from the rear yard property line. So, if you were to insert property line after rear yard, you write that down.
They're doing it just like a detached garage. A lot of times, when you put it up, detached garage, you got to keep it three foot away from your side, three foot away from your back line, if you want to put it all the way to the back.
Well, yeah, like with sheds, you know, we have with sheds of 10 feet from the back line or sideline, too. Okay. That makes sense. Let me keep going, or somebody else...
Keep going.
Page 62. 9.13.
You got a few in mind?
I'm not sure what it, and this could be that I don't understand the definition of accessory, but "Daycare center receiving state certification pursuant to the higher wise code shall be prohibited as accessory to any non-residential use in accordance with a fundamental ordinance." That accessory, I don't understand, as accessory to any non-residential use. Somebody explain that.
Okay, you ever turn that thing over? I, an accessory use is... Going?
Yeah.
All right, an accessory use is a use different than the primary use. Okay, so a residence, you can have accessory use in a residential area. I forget, A or B daycare, one of the, a little daycare. That can be an accessory use. Okay, so that, that's what that means, I think.
So, somebody that understands codes, read that, and we'll know what we want there. Okay. The question, another one behind the shopping center, that's, that's moved. That's the last one we've got so far. Page 78, 12.8. I think maybe, I was thinking about this regulation, it's a regulation, and it's applied to a shopping center. Well, I don't think we're higher than 35 feet either from the back door. That would be about 30 feet.
We should, somebody shot elevation.
Right.
Jason did.
And that may not have changed, but it's probably in the village's...
I was going to say, and if the shopping center in this code isn't in the village center, it's not P1, right? Is that correct?
Correct, there it is. Maximum height of any principal building shall be 44 feet, and he did that based, I think, it was on the height of the White Building, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, actually, at the second floor, I went, what's the height to the, like, the second floor of the shopping center, like, you know, over on the north end?
Yeah, but it's from the, from the front elevation.
Well, it's just the front elevation? Okay, it doesn't say that, it says maximum height's 35 feet.
Elsewhere, I think we described where the elevation is, where it's measured from elsewhere in here.
Yeah, but the shopping center in the somewhere, everything that's there.
Yeah, because I was thinking about, I never have measured it, but I was thinking, you know, the second floor, like above the library and all that, that seems like it's pretty, got pretty close to 35 feet from the lower level block there.
If you figure 10 foot for every floor, that's probably what you'll end up having. So, that's 30 foot if you got three levels facing the back. So, it should, it should be really close to 35, probably less than 35, flat roof.
Okay. So, I'll get right in. Still working?
All right, that's fine. David? Jeff?
Well, I just want to touch on the chicken coops and, you know, the urban perspective. I did talk to Steven Drace, who lives in Green Hills and has chickens.
He's my neighbor.
And, and as far as I can tell, you know, there hasn't been any issues with his neighbors. And the reason I wanted to touch base with him is I know that we had at least one resident that I'm aware of that had concern about having chicken coops here. And I, and I think what happens, for us to make good decisions, sometimes, I really applaud people coming and speaking up, but then we also have to remember what this, how this impacts other people that maybe didn't get here. Because according to Jeff Forbes, under the, yes, he, they would be grandfathered in, but when the chicken dies, they can't replace the chicken, so basically his chickens would go away eventually.
Eighteen months.
So, I know that there was concern from a health standpoint, Salmonella, and what was cited was the Mount Health facility, which had been cited here once. They do have thousands of birds, I don't think it's an example. Yeah, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, and that chances and percentages of it being a health issue, from what I can tell, is very, very low. I just wanted to express that I've gone, you know, tried to look at it as, well, as unbiased as possible. And I think it's a good thing, I think it's a trend appropriate thing, and I think that we have reasonable regulations where we had none. So I think, I think it's something that should allow.
It is not like we're permitting a new use.
Right.
That some, you know, allowing something as formal.
True.
Isn't there a one acre minimum?
Uh, no, no, that was a request by, I just assumed.
Um, you mentioned, I did find some that would kind of self-regulate that a little bit on page fifty-five, three A, nine point two, three, wait a minute, F, three A, missed one there. On setbacks, coops, enclosures, or cages have to be set back a minimum of twenty feet from all property lines. So, you know, some of our townhomes, their, their backyards aren't, wouldn't even permit it. So I think if you're really close, it's not gonna work out anyway. You have to have more property, one more property.
The only thing, I, I looked at that, and actually, that seems extensive, but if we wanna keep it in there to actually limit people from having them, because I know that our backyard backs up to another backyard, and to put a coop kind of more in the middle of your yard to be twenty feet away, it seemed, I don't know, but other, you know, where, where.
Yeah, that, that's not appropriate right now, 'cause most of your yards here are between fifty and sixty foot wide. So if you're twenty and twenty, it will be ripe hits. It'll be a little bit.
I, I would like to at least look at and see what other communities are doing as far as that goes, as far as that.
I think you close it off too much, it goes back to the, you know, if you're on really close to the property line, that's, you owe your neighbor just inherited chickens and so forth.
Well, there's, there's eleven on chickens, right?
Six, if you do the math.
I mean, 'cause right now Steve, he's, he's in the backyard, but he's, doesn't have twenty foot, well, you know, either side or back, or he's within about five foot of one line.
I know, that, they expressed, that, that was one of the reasons they, they liked being in Green Hill, so.
Yeah.
As much as it.
I'll tell you what, it is a hot topic with the twenty-somethings.
Well, I mean, and we are Green Hills, and it's like, what, you know?
A self-contained community? Get your poultry.
Me, it's.
Yeah, pioneers have chickens, what they ate.
Well, I think about where I lived on Andover, you know, it was a four-unit building, I was, I was in units, and later it was a little bigger and had a garage. But, you know, I had some chickens, and then the guy next to me had chickens, and then the lady on the other side did one, and then the other guy, the other end had chickens, I mean, she'd got chickens all over.
She going ass on her move.
Port shut, so she's gonna hear is chickens, 'cause everything is just boom, right there.
They are pretty quiet.
So I, I think, well, another thing, too, I don't know if you know, those chickens live to be twenty-five, thirty years old.
Yes, but they only lay eggs for a certain period of time.
Good to say.
Eighteen months, they couldn't lay an egg.
But, no, I just think that having, you know, worst-case scenario, having a bunch of very small yards in the old parts of Green Hills, and having every, that'd be really miserable for somebody right in the middle of all that who's allergic to chickens. I think if you got bigger yards, great, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm more concerned about the setbacks from the side yards than I am.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Well, that's why I think it would be good, it would prevent it, really, effectively prevent it from being these real tight little yards.
And that, that's a decent point. I understand that. But I, I agree with you on the side yards. I don't know.
I would rather see it, say, a minimum of twenty feet from all side property lines, not necessarily the back property line.
I think we, we should still put a distance against the back, the back.
I'd say five and ten, five on the side, ten in the back.
Why, why don't I just look and see how it's worked elsewhere? 'Cause they might actually have property lines, and if there's a building right up against there, it might be a whole different.
I know there's a lot of that going on about lookout, I guess it's going on all over the place, but.
I mean, I've got colleagues that live College Hill, it's got chickens.
They're right, there are plenty in Northside.
Yeah, Northside.
There's a structure in Northside, they have, there's chickens, all of those back up there. That's a bay. My cat's like, don't be with Maggie's around.
They're laying eggs right off the coop.
Well, there's something to have a pitch.
There's egg givers.
Be a lot more.
Once you buy a few, yeah, once you have a fresh egg, you never go back.
Joey mentioned one since you're on.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing, do you remember when we originally were talking about urban agriculture, including other related animals? So in nine point two C, it talks about stables, and I think we can eliminate that, 'cause we, they're in our definition down to just the little rabbits, dogs.
Canals, you get any?
Loose stables. Yeah, I don't think we need any ungluts creeping around Green Hills. Personally.
And just, I'm sorry, just one more thing, just in a general sense, I haven't looked at it deeper, but I was trying to find the bigger pockets of interest, let's say. Urban farming was one, signage, to me, is very important, but I understand how it needs to be based in a measurable way to determine that. But then also, we'll have to engage deeper on the village center and what that means, like behind the community building, and, you know, we talked about the golf course and that kind of thing. I don't feel I'm prepared to talk about it, but I do wanna bring it up as an area that we need to.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a couple of things that I don't know that we're prepared to completely delve into tonight, but the village center boundaries are one of them. And we should probably have the maps in front of us.
I'll get that.
Yeah, I mean.
But I'd like some further study with that, but I'd rather be heard, please, myself.
Yeah, and, and there's another issue with home-based businesses that Terry brought up. I think we need to look real carefully at the things we prohibit, her example of the Avon lady not being able to bring, or the Mary Kay lady, which is probably more, more likely these days, or the Tupperware lady, for that matter.
And then there, one other thing that we had talked about before was the, remember the length of truck that we were allowing to have signage? Where do we net out on that?
I remember in the last meeting that they said no, no measure, because the gentleman had come in with the, uh, the measure on the largest possible vehicle made, and the, the idea after that was, we better not put it in there if it's a livelihood or somebody has to do with that. I remember that at the last zoning meeting, they said no restrictions on that.
Okay, 'cause I went by a Cornwell tool truck, and that's definitely over twenty feet, I remember talking about twenty feet, and I'm sure.
Check back on the meeting itself, or it was on the zoning meeting itself, when we, you know, we, we didn't approach and talk about it, but it was stated. He brought up the measurements, and the panel decided not to, just check back on that meeting. Also, Mr. Holder. On the side.
No, I mean, where is it?
I, I wasn't sure.
I, I don't.
It's on, on signage, this is on trucks that park at somebody's.
On vans, on vans or the trucks, or something that is your livelihood, if you are a plumber, or if you are.
You wanna park it at your house, now there's restrictions on the.
Yeah, because I think the, the code originally said something about four feet square, or some kind of.
And there was stuff.
I mean, Zen's plumbing truck, the part that's, who's got Zen's plumbing all across the whole back of the box, and.
I think it was geared towards someone putting a very large truck and, and on the street. Like, I, I think in this, this case, a tool truck is in the driveway.
Do we want to preserve it?
Well, I think, I think within reason we would, we don't wanna flatbed and trailer, you know, taking up seven parking spaces, I wouldn't think.
No, I agree, I mean, then honestly, most new construction communities, you can't park any commercial vehicles on, on any driveway. On all the streets.
Where you guys, the one section that was?
Not saying that, well, it's a good idea.
Size of trucks is nine point one, but I didn't find one that's the size of the signs on trucks. Nine point one is the. Page number? Um, page fifty-nine is the one that talks about, you know, like their semis parking. That's not the one that talks about the size of the signs on trucks.
Well, so this, yeah, this one does say, no truck, construction equipment, or other vehicle business or home district industrial nature should be parked or stored on a lot in a residence district that exceeds twenty-two feet in length, or seven and one-half feet high, tall. I, as, as lame as it is with me and my dog, but I was measuring, and that particular truck, I think, is beyond twenty-two feet.
The Cornwell truck?
Yeah, so I don't know how you, my intention would not to limit him in, in that case, but did we check other places and see what their length is, or?
I, I didn't personally.
No, okay.
'Cause our, you know, right now, our extended van is twenty-two foot long, and it's, to the top of it, is probably seven foot.
Yeah, 'cause I thought I measured this like twenty-five, twenty-six.
Jeff, what about D?
Box truck or dog truck?
Is that a box truck?
I think it could qualify.
Oh, that's. It's a box truck. It's a box truck, chance of a box a little bit.
Yeah, it is, it's a very. So I don't know, I mean, we just, I think there's a lot to consider, and the intention is not to cause a problem for someone that that's how they make their living, but we don't want giant trucks stored around, so. Do we do a variance, or is that setting a precedent?
No, you would have to come for a variance, you wouldn't.
No, I, no, I meant this one.
And that, that is somebody, that's a somebody complaint.
There's a lot of times.
I don't think something that moves like that would qualify for variance.
It's more of a fixed, is that?
Either in or out.
Yeah. Right, and I don't think you can get variance to, like, trucks.
There's, well, I mean, you can ask for a variance for anything, it's just if it's gonna be accepted or not. If you say, gee whiz, I really like to have, have my van here, it's my livelihood, it's in the car that I have to drive, and I wanna see if I can actually park my van on the street here, you know, 'cause they're saying you can't do that. And then he can always say, I like to apply for a variance.
Page one forty-three.
If it's accepted or not.
G four.
G four, I don't know, I'll have to check. Oh, good.
Yeah, that's where it is.
That, that is when they actually put a, they get around the signage laws and park.
I know, if you read it. A G four, number four.
Yeah. That's.
Says shall not include signs on vehicles primarily used in the daily operation of business.
Right, like the plumbing truck, right.
Truck, yeah. The Cornwell truck.
So, I mean, I don't think there's an issue with the sign, it's just about how big a truck, are we willing to let somebody in the driveway?
It's not a problem with G four, it's, it is a problem with nine point ten D being a box truck. And then it is a problem, because I'm almost positive it's more than twenty-two feet long. And I think we should find out, is that a Jeff Forbes question about whether variance can apply to that situation?
Yes.
And then, once you make that decision, does that just like wipe away what we're, we've got here, and that means anybody else can say, hey, you did it?
Just for help.
Okay.
And mine's not a precedent.
Yeah, but it's a precedent, it's right, it'll be a precedent for somebody else to use it.
Yeah, I mean, I can see some fancy pants places wanting to ban that truck. But, you know, the, the reality of people's lives is that the plumbing truck, or the Cornwell tool truck, or the Mack tool truck, or Pinky Penning, are, you know, it's how people make their living.
I think it's very similar to RV, it's, hey, I don't wanna look at that giant RV right next door, and I don't wanna look at this.
Yeah, they wasn't RVs, a heck of a lot longer and taller.
Yeah.
Is it out of line to get a read on the neighbor that lives next to it, if they don't care, and that could?
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the process, you know, for zoning facilities. You know, that, that's part of their job.
Yeah, well, actually, you have two hundred foot either way on either side of you, that's what you're supposed to do, and send letters to them. The person across, directly across the street, and the people that are past your back line and drive. Go all good letters, and see if it bothers them.
Okay.
You know, I mean, some of the issues with the trucks can be too, just, I mean, the bigger the truck, more difficult, it's gonna be torn on some of our streets.
Well, yes, some of the. I'm not concerned about can you get a fire engine down the street.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, we aren't regulating parking, the zoning code, are we?
Well, we're talking about being parked or stored in the residence districts, and parked, I would imagine parked on the street.
Yeah, I, I mean, the box truck language concerns me.
Yeah, but you could see somebody saying, well, then, why isn't my rusty old tow truck allowed? I, right now, my tendency would be to still enforce this, but allow someone to have an exception to the rule, because.
It's a pleasure.
That's where I would.
We don't have anything in the current code, this would be new, correct?
I believe so.
But I'll, I'll check and see what other people say, and just see how they, you know, as far as, when to park. Okay, that's it for me for now.
Jeff, since you're involved in signage and stuff like that, one of the concerns I've heard most often, and in fact that we talked about the last three or four years, is the shopping center sitting down? And when you allow, what's the height of the sign, whatever it is, if it's sitting from down, the traffic may not be able to see it. So we have.
But their, their signs are above on the facade, they wouldn't have ground signs, right? You know, we were talking about limiting them to.
Right, um, well, they could in certain areas, or we could on village property, if we said, choose to give them.
You, you, you might understand your question, right? I know it sits down, but right now, they have no signage with the exception of Johnny's Stores, which is.
I know, because at one time, they tried to put a sign, and they were not allowed.
Who was that?
There was, the, the jeweler wanted to have it a little bit more prominent, and so did the rest around the side, no one could find them. And the only sign they had was the one running from the property. So if you were sitting way down as they were, as they were going through or trying to find it, it would be a little bit more difficult.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, and, and I'm still wrestling with the idea that people don't know those businesses are there. Because the facade, signage, you can see when you drive by, I'm still a big advocate, I, I know many places that if people wanna get to them, and I'm not trying to say make it hard, people will get to them. I, I don't know if it's all the weight is on the signage. The ground signs don't really apply to the shopping center up front, right? Talking about the ones that are permanent signs, that we talked about lowering to eight foot.
Right, I, although, I, you know, ultimately, I would think to, I, I could envision to, again, it would be on our properties, the council would have to approve it, maybe one on each end that would be, you know, a very tasteful ground mound sign. I, I believe, way, long time ago, they had a big one, I don't know if you saw the roof, big one that said, like, Green Hill.
Shopping center.
I, I believe, what, a long time ago, they had a big one, I don't know if you saw the roof, big one that said, like, Green Hill Shopping Center.
Shopping Center, yeah, where, where.
Do that, so I would think just, just our shopping center and our commercial, that we want to allow them to have that kind of signage.
So, and showing different, what stores were in that shopping center that had it lit up?
Yeah.
Right, so, so if Johnny's Toys was a taller sign, um, I'm just trying to see if that eight-foot limitation applies to that situation.
Johnny's Toys?
No, I'm just saying, if we imagine where the Johnny's Toy sign is, there is a nice, well-done, marquee sign that listed the businesses, pointing, you know, down to the shopping center, do we have language in here, especially that eight-foot height? Does that limit us?
Well, if you're talking about befacing or working with the existing sign.
No, I'm talking about new.
Oh, new? Um, we, we have it to the extent that each individual user in a multi-tenant building would have the option to have the same size sign on it. I, you're definitely gonna be looking, probably, at a variance there for a bigger sign.
Okay.
Eight feet high.
But if that is something put up by us, can we get a variance?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay.
Sure.
Because, I mean, I think where the Johnny's Toy sign is a good lead-in for people to see if we ever had a nice sign that pointed to the rest of the shopping center. I just didn't want it to be limited.
You have a nice shopping center too, Jeff.
Well, we'd start with the sign, look at the rest of it.
Got a nice lot.
Yeah, got a parking lot.
The sign always starts with a.
All right, Glenn, do you have?
Here are the things that I think we need to continue to wrestle with. Uh, the six-foot privacy fence.
Leave it at six.
A gentleman named Tom, I don't have his last name, talked about four more dogs.
Brownie?
Brown, Brownie.
Four more dogs, as opposed to?
No.
No, he has five, hasn't he?
He has four.
The definition of kennel, I believe, is the, the issue there.
And the wording on it, maybe how many it was, more than?
Four or one.
Obviously, we've got the village center boundaries as an issue. And then, um, outside wood burning furnaces was brought up by somebody.
Yeah.
And then the R two setbacks.
Furnaces, why would they call it furnaces that are just, like, a pit?
No, they, they're some like commercial ones now.
These are like a furnace that.
Looks like that kind of house.
It's a, it's a, it's a building that contains a, a wood-fired boiler.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go see one down on Deer Hill, that's the one Wendell's not happy about.
Oh, there is one?
Yeah, that's why, that's why he brought it up, he didn't bring it up.
Where is it?
Here, it's on Deer Hill, one of the sides. Left there.
Down, down there someplace, down the end on the left.
Wow. Because I know where Wendell owns this.
Yeah, it's a, a neighbor, a neighbor, um, owns one of those, that's, that's his issue, he's not happy.
No matter what we do with this code, his neighbor's gonna own that one for as long as it's there, because it's a non-conforming use, but it's already existing.
It's, it forms now.
Right, yes.
It would be, it would be a non-conforming use, but, right, do, do we, um, you know, are we willing, or do we desire to prohibit those things in the future? That's the question.
Wow, I think I knew that is, too.
What's the, what's the, what's the problem? I mean, what is this problem?
Smoke. You burn wood, you make smoke, smoke, you know, the chimney's only so high.
Because the ground slopes down that bad.
Are your EPA regulations in place?
I don't believe so.
Do we have anything on, uh, owners burning?
Open fire?
Yeah, it's the, the open, the open burning, it's not about smoke and the open burning thing, you know? I think there's some distinction that needs to be made between, uh, you know, a chimney that exhausts on the top of a house, and the chimney that exhausts.
How high is the chimney on this?
Don't know, don't know.
No, I see, how high is the chimney on this?
Don't know.
Oh.
But, you know.
Is there fire regulations on your own chimneys? It's gotta be above the highest point in your house so much.
It's gotta be two foot above the running ridge line.
But what about something that's adjacent to the house?
As long as it's ten foot away, it can be any height that above that building that it's at. Yeah, if he's ten foot away, I'm sure. What, what's happening is, it's probably okay, it's just that he doesn't like it, it doesn't smoke.
Well, I mean, if you're sitting on your porch, wind changes, and it's.
I wonder if they got building permits to erect. I think that's gonna be, that would be the issue.
That's right, we gotta find out if you got a building permit to erect that building.
Well, that's, this is not about, this is current zoning code, okay? Let's not, all right, go for it. The, the six-foot fence business, that's privacy fence in the side yard. I think that's what the gentleman was, was advocating. Side yard and privacy fences.
I think we need to, yeah, we need to just have a more thorough discussion about that. I'm, I, I think, I don't.
Six is standard.
Yeah, I, I think four is way too low.
Yes.
It's not privacy.
But, side yard or rear yard, that's the, that's the question. It's like, privacy fence in side yard, that's the issue. Okay?
You want to know, the side yard's four feet, you shut open, right?
We've already done this, Dan, you and I, with the, uh, with the planning commission, 'cause that was a point of discussion.
Yeah, it's like, do you, do you allow, and just in general, privacy fence in a side yard? Or do you restrict the privacy fence to the rear yard? That's the question.
Yeah.
I mean, because if you allow the privacy fence in the side yard, in many locations, most locations, it looks like your building's not okay.
Right.
While westward. And then there are some lots, because they're on a corner or what have you, that it may be appropriate, may be completely appropriate to allow that to occur in a side yard.
Like, if they got two fronts of side stand, like, he would want.
Yeah.
Privacy fence on a side yard when he has the all-time percentage.
Right, so, you know, the, the, the question gets to be, do we just blanket allow a six-foot privacy fence in all side yards regardless? Or do we require the, an individual who desires to put up a new six-foot privacy fence in a side yard to come to the BCA for variance?
All right, you, why don't, why don't you just sit there, 'cause I, most of it that I've seen, six-foot privacy fences don't exceed the back part of the house.
Right, then that's the rear yard, and that's, that's what the code says is allowed.
That's perfect. It shouldn't go along the side or, or towards the front.
So, all right, so, do I, I hear a general nodding that we leave that particular piece alone.
Yeah.
Side, it's, it's fourteen and fifty percent of it on the side.
What's the, what's the section number there?
I think it's up on nine, or seven.
Nine, nine eleven. Nine eleven.